See, just because we have some people on the telephone, could we read the rolls so we know who is here and who is on the phone?
Alderwoman Crusen.
Here.
Alderman Cohn.
I'm here.
Chair Stoudt. Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Pinkston.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Spade.
Here.
Commissioner Visentainer.
Here.
And Commissioners Towers and Jay are not present.
Great. Thank you all. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the February 4th meeting. They were not approved at the last meeting. They were lengthy and people didn't have an opportunity to review them in detail, so we'll take them up today.
I move we adopt the minutes of the February 4th meeting.
Second.
And moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes that were distributed to us from the February 4th meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, changes to those minutes? Can we have a roll, please?
Alderwoman Crusen.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Chair Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Pinkston.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
Commissioner Visentainer.
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
Okay. Next item on the... Next item on the agenda are the approval of the minutes from the March 4th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Previous roll called, requested.
Previous roll's been requested, but I'm not going to vote on that, so I'd like you to call the rolls, please.
Okay.
Alderwoman Crusen.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Chair Stoudt.
Abstain.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Pinkston.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
Commissioner Visentainer.
Aye.
And the motion passes with all but one president voting yes, with the chair abstaining.
All right, and we'll move on to our sort of main item tonight, a public hearing on our Strategic Land Use Plan Amendment under city rules. And we're going to have a staff presentation on this.
Yes, ma'am.
The numbers of the commission, this is a proposed amendment to the city's Strategic Land Use Plan, or the SLUPE as we tend to call it. Amendment number 13 consists of a portion of the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood called Shoto Gateway. Tonight's format will be a presentation by PDA staff. We'll then have a presentation by Park Central Development, which is a community development corporation that operates in the 17th ward. Matt Green is here tonight and will talk about the neighborhood planning process for the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood. The Planning Commission will then conduct a public hearing, and ultimately will vote on the amendment. The public comment and review period for this public hearing opened about three weeks or so ago, on March 10th. It ends tonight. Public notice as advertising this public hearing appeared in the March 10th issues of the City Journal and Daily Record. Exhibit A of your Planning Commission resolution or staff reports provide some background information and the recommendations for this SLUPE amendment. It's also been available on the city's website since March 10th, and we have some handouts available as well. Again, SLUPE Amendment Number 13 is based on a planning process for a new vision for the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood. The neighborhood basically is bounded by Interstate 64, Danaventer Avenue, Interstate 44, and Kings Highway Boulevard. It's located just south of the Washington University Medical Center and the Cortex Innovation District, both of which are expanding rapidly. The area that we're going to be focusing in on tonight is not the entire neighborhood, but actually a small portion of the neighborhood that's called Shoto Gateway. And that name refers to the site's location and function as the primary eastern entrance to the neighborhood. So this is Shoto Avenue, and if you're driving westward, you'll come to a fork in the road. You could stay on Shoto Avenue, which is primarily residential in nature, or you can veer left onto Manchester Avenue, which is primarily commercial in character, and is also the entrance to the Grove Entertainment District. The amendment area has a bit of an arrowhead shape to it. It includes seven parcels on four city blocks. The neighborhood planning effort that Matt was engaged in described this site as the best development opportunity in the neighborhood and one of the few areas in the neighborhood that can accommodate large-scale development projects. And part of that is, if you take a look at the aerial photograph, you'll see lots of vacant land under touched and underutilized properties. It also states that Terror Street, which lies here, has the potential to become a significant link to Cortex as well as the new MetroLink station to be built north of Interstate 64. As I mentioned, Park Central Development basically was the lead agency in the planning process. They worked with H3 Studio, one of its consultants, and the plan or vision that they came up with had a number of different recommendations for Shoto Gateway, this particular area. Basically, it called for mixed-use development and some rehab buildings along Sarah Street, additional mixed-use development along Manchester and Danaventer, some parking which is sorely needed currently in the area, as well as some pedestrian improvements in the area. Matt's organization has been working closely with Green Street Development, which is a local development firm, and they've expressed some interest in this particular site. And the site plan on the right shows a preliminary site plan of a project that they're proposing called Shoto's Grove. It's a mixed-use development project, which is calling for approximately 300 apartments and 78,000 square feet of retail space, some parking and some improvements. Now, we're not reviewing this particular development project at all tonight, but I see that Brian Pratt of Green Street has joined us, and if you have any questions about the project, you can tell us. In terms of the existing uses, on the right is a New Commerce Bank building that was recently constructed within the past year. On the left is the former Commerce Bank building, much larger in size, apparently too large for the day's market, and that building is currently in the process of being demolished. That former bank building is also located on a very large piece of land. It includes an underutilized surface parking lot, as well as some vacant land located to the west. To the south of that particular site is a combination convenience store and gas station, as well as two vacant lots. And to the south is a surface parking lot, as well as a small locksmith operation with a surface parking lot. And then finally, looking westward, you can see a pedestrian plaza that nicely landscape leading towards the Grove District, as well as the new overhead sign that provides visitors to the district. The city's Strategic Land Use Plan currently has three categories in the Shoto Grove...I'm sorry, in the Shoto Gateway area. A neighborhood commercial area, shown here in green, neighborhood preservation area, shown here in yellow, and a recreation open space and preservation area, shown in green. Based on this new vision that's been created for the Forest Park Southeast, the mass organization, staff is recommending that the site be reclassified as a specially mixed-use area to reflect the recommendations for mixed-use development. That specially mixed-use area is defined as areas like downtown where it is intended that a unique mix of uses be preserved and developed. So in essence, what we're doing is replacing the three existing strategic land use categories with the new and specially mixed use. This would better reflect that neighborhood vision's proposed land uses, as well as character, and in addition, would facilitate the development of Shoto's Grove, the proposed mixed-use development project. So if the SLUPE amendment were to be approved tonight, it would have that blue color there and the colors that were there previously. In addition, I should note that, again, this covers just a small portion of the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood, and in the months ahead, the remainder of the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood will come before the Planning Commission in terms of additional amending of the SLUPE. And finally, once the SLUPE has been straightened out and it matches with the neighborhood vision, Park Central Development will... I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Matt will follow me with a presentation of the planning process.
Any of the commissioners have any questions, staff?
There's two open space recreational pieces there. Are those pieces owned by the city, and I guess what are the intentions of drawing that into that land use?
I don't believe the...this piece of land here is not owned by the city.
How about the other quarter?
I'm not sure about that, Matt.
It's owned by LRA.
It is owned by LRA. I think the intent is, and Matt, you certainly know this better than I do, but I think in looking at the long-term vision for the neighborhood, they felt that there was a better chance of creating a open space right in this area here, right at the junction of Sarah and Shoto and Manchester, to create a pedestrian plaza that would be more suitable than the two sites shown currently as the designation of recreational open space and preservation. In other words, it's truly at the gateway into the neighborhood where you have that fork in the road as to whether you go down Shoto or go down Manchester.
Is that...are those...what's all those two properties now?
The site here is the locksmith operation with the surface parking lot, and it looks like there may be a U-Haul operation associated with it as well. And this particular piece of surface parking lot, that when I was out there taking photographs, was empty during the day, and I suspect caters to the people who are out for entertainment on weekends.
And I guess my line of question is only in the fact that recreation or open space, that those are kind of really prime intersections and gateways, and we're going to change that land use, but I'm assuming there's a better and higher gateway opportunity here besides those two parcels?
Let me flip back to the drawing. So we're talking about...is that where we're talking about, Matt?
So that right now is the right-of-way owned by the city. The proposed development would vacate Shoto to the east of Sarah and create a pedestrian plaza. So that's an open space that the neighborhood believes would be more utilized than the parcel to the east, for example. The parking lot to the west, which is currently loaned a zone...sorry, its use is labeled as open space, the neighborhood believes that that is better suited to have development.
I was just curious.
Come up and explain the process.
Sure. So I didn't have a presentation for you, but I'll pass along, this is our vision document. You can feel free to peruse through it. But I'm Matt Green. It just happens that I wear a green shirt today. A project manager at Park Central, who are the community development corporation that works in Forest Park Southeast and a few other neighborhoods. So I've been working with Roman. He asked that I update you on the process for this neighborhood vision document.
Matt, you may want to see out in front.
Oh, sure. So we started the Forest Park Southeast Neighborhood Plan and form-based district process in January of 2014. The first thing we did was we identified a steering committee. So we have a 15-member steering committee that's helping champion the project through the process. The steering committee is comprised of business owners, residents, institutional partners, and property owners in Forest Park Southeast. Once we identified the steering committee, we started...we hired H3 Studio, who specializes in doing form-based codes and strategic plans. We hired them, and they conducted 17 different stakeholder meetings with 28 different people in the neighborhood. The whole purpose of those meetings was to identify kind of a comprehensive list of issues in the neighborhood that we'd like to address and bring to the public. After we had those meetings, and throughout last year, we hosted four different public meetings and had over 200 participants at these public meetings. Prior to each public meeting, we had a steering committee meeting, so the steering committee would help ensure that we're covering everything and doing it in a way that it would help cater to get the best feedback from everybody attending the meeting. We also held a two-day planning charrette and a community open house. The planning charrette, we looked at, if you look at the back of that planning document, you'll notice there's three different...we call it strategic redevelopment areas. Shoto Gateway is just one of three areas that the neighborhood really dove into and looked at where there's potential opportunities. But again, as Roman said, this was one of the largest areas. It's a gateway to the neighborhood. It's the gateway to the Grove that everybody thought was very important to address this specific area. So the planning process for this area, Roman mentioned that Green Street is very interested in doing a development on the site. Well, the neighborhood started planning the site prior to a developer being interested in the site. So once we learned that Green Street was interested in the site, Park Central and H3, we quickly engaged with Brian and his team to make sure that their vision kind of mimicked what the neighborhood was looking at. So we've had a good open process throughout. We...the neighborhood came up with a mission statement and then 10 neighborhood goals. We believe that changing the land use to suit a development like Green Street's proposed development would help us meet at least three of the 10 different goals for the neighborhood, namely establishing a walkable and highly...a walkable streets and highly high-quality public spaces. The buildings, we would force them to be up to the street, very walkable, and then additionally be a public space to the south. Increasing neighborhood stability, social equity with improved housing stock, increased housing diversity, and reduced vacancies, and then also increasing business diversity, employment opportunities, and local entrepreneurship. So that's regarding the specific development and the neighborhood's vision for that site. And regarding the location, and why we believe the location's so important, I already said that it's at the nexus of all the streets, and Roman mentioned that. But also, the central west end is just to the north. The neighborhood identified Sarah Street as a critical link for pedestrians and cyclists, specifically between the two neighborhoods. The streets to the west, they intersect the Wash U Med Center in not the nicest way. It's very busy. It's not very pedestrian-friendly. Tower Grove is now ramp up O-40, so Sarah Street we see as a critical intersection between the two neighborhoods. Also, the central west end form-based code calls for Sarah to become a, I'd call it maybe a miniature Euclid, with retail on the ground floor and apartments above. The proposed form-based district in Forest Park Southeast would mimic that plan as well. So it would create a nice, solid district from central west end down to Forest Park Southeast along Sarah. I believe that's it. Really, we just think that the SLUPE changes will help the neighborhood achieve its goal stage throughout the planning process.
So can we, build on Commissioner Spade's comment, that in the focus that the citizens and the team did on the Shoto's Gateway, the push and pull and evaluation of these green spaces was fully fleshed out?
It was, and that's one of the stated goals, to improve public spaces and recreation space, green space. If you look through the plan, there's a few areas of new green space, which we've identified through underutilized areas. And then also, when the Strategic Land Use Plan was created, it wasn't Shoto Park. Shoto Park now is a park in between Newstead and Tower Grove and north of Shoto. So it's a brand-new city park, so we believe that that...it's a good substitution.
Now that I see this trainer's plan here, I can better understand how Shoto's kind of terminating on that open space, and that helps that north-south pedestrian spine going up Sarah, hopefully towards MetroLink and all that. So that makes a lot of sense.
Any other questions for staff, just from that? Then we'll just go right into our public meeting. We'll open our commission meeting for the public meeting, and we...I haven't received any comments from...
I don't believe there's any people that signed up.
Ask any of the people in the audience if they have a comment on this. And they haven't signed up, we want you to rush to sign your name, so you're recognized.
So as Matt indicated, this is one of those processes where there's been extensive interchange and interaction in the community.
After years' talking...
So after years' talking, there'll be...
How many people were engaged in this from the neighborhood? I mean, if you...did you quantify that total?
We had about 200 at the various meetings.
Again, any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Entertaining motion?
I move we adopt the proposed changes to the Strategic Land Use Plan.
And moved and seconded that we adopt the changes that prevented the Strategic Land Use Plan.
And this is Ivy. She's obviously fallen off the phone, so Don's trying to get her to call in on our conference call.
So we'll just chat him on our phones.
Because the alternative is to actually kill the conference call and start it over again.
Well, we have a forum.
What's your phone number? I'll just put her on my speaker.
I just got it.
When will the work on Shoto take place?
The proposed development?
Our intention is to start by year-end. We have some other approvals, some of which we made back in front of the table.
Sure.
But our timeline is to start turning dirt by year-end.
I, Ivy, we lost you.
Yeah, it looks like we require a street.
So we're going to have you participate in this vote, and then we'll get you back into the speaker system.
Okay, we've had our public hearing. We've had no speakers. We've had a presentation from Matt and staff. There's been a motion made and seconded that we adopt Strategic Land Use Plan Amendment Number 13. Could you read the rolls, please?
Sure. Alderwoman Crusen.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Chair Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Pinkston.
Ivy. Are you voting? Ivy, are you voting? Okay. What's your vote? Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
Commissioner Visentainer.
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
So Ivy, I'm going to check you to call in on my desk.
Okay.
And we'll move on to item number six, Wash U Med Center CUP.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay.
This is a proposed amendment to an existing community unit plan, more specifically as a proposed amendment number two of the Washington University Medical Center Community Unit Plan. The Washington University Medical Center is comprised of a number of different institutions, including Barnes Jewish Hospital, BJC Health Care, Children's Hospital, and the Wash U School of Medicine. Obviously, many of the institutions are leaving institutions in their fields. The community unit plan is generally bounded by Forest Park Avenue on the north, Boyle Avenue on the east, Interstate 64 on the south, and Kings Highway Boulevard on the west. It's primarily located in the central west end. It does include a sliver of the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood, located a little bit south of Interstate 64. The current CUP area is about 145 acres in size. That's excluding the alleys and streets in that particular area. The permitted uses within the CUP are healthcare, research, and educational purposes, but they are broadened out to include related uses, such as parking, retail, hotels, bookstores, and of that nature. Amendment two is basically proposing to remove two parcels that are no longer owned by Washington University or its constituent entities. Those two parcels are located south of Interstate 64. They're the only two parcels located south of Interstate 64, and they're the only two parcels that are located in Forest Park This is an existing zoning map of the city. It shows the boundaries of the community unit plan, as well as the boundaries of the underlying zoning districts it's located in. So you can see that much of the community unit plan is zoned E, multiple-family dwelling district, shown here in the brown, and H area commercial district, shown in the dark brown, I guess. Both of those zoning districts allow for a variety of different uses. In addition to that, a healthy amount of the area that's also zoned J and K, which both allow testicle uses. The community unit plan was established back in March of 2008 by ordinance. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission prior to its approval. Amendment number one was approved about three years later. The reason for that amendment was that five parcels were removed from the community unit plan area, and four parcels were added to it. So this was done as a result of real estate transactions. One of the regulations for a community unit plan is that all of the property located within it has to be owned by that particular entity. The community unit plan has...the document has three primary sections. What I'd like to emphasize is that there are no text changes that are being proposed as part of this amendment. This is strictly a geographic amendment. And in essence, amendment number two is proposing that we remove two parcels that are no longer owned by Washington University Medical Center. The first parcel, 4456 West Patten, was sold to a private property for the development of an apartment building. That apartment building has since been constructed and is occupied. It's part of the Aventura Forest Park Apartment Complex. The second parcel, 4472 West Patten, was sold to a different party for the development of a hotel, and that hotel is currently under construction.
Thank you, Ivy.
It's expected to be completed before the end of the year. And since that time, both of these parcels have been consolidated with some adjacent parcels in order for those development projects to go forward. The photo on the left shows the Aventura Forest Park Apartment Building, and the photo on the right shows the hotel that is currently under construction. The whole here is the college, a pharmacy, which is not part of the complex, and the area that is being proposed to be removed are these two parcels located here in south of Interstate 64 and Forest Park Southeast. The city strategic land use plan designates virtually the entire area as institutional preservation investment, which is consistent with the presence of the various medical procedures that are located in that part of town. All community unit plans, whether they're being established for the first time or being amended, must meet three conditions. The first is that the property values and character of the area will not be adversely impacted. We leave that a hotel and apartment building, leave the assets go to the medical center as well as the neighborhood. The second is that the development is consistent with the zoning of the purpose. Obviously, neither of those developments are safety. And the last condition really doesn't apply here as a removal of two of the parcels. So PDA staff is recommending approval of amendment number two, and if approved, PDA staff will work with Washington University Medical Center to finalize the draft or build for introduction at the formal. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we have a couple of representatives from Washington University here. I think they should have typed out all the names right. Robert Blain, Steve Sobo, I think you've got a late number.
Question, if I may?
Sure.
I don't believe I was a part of the commission when this first came through, and so I'm a little unfamiliar with CUPs in general. What authority do they provide the developer?
Well, it's a zoning overlaying district. It's similar to like a planned development district or a form-based district. One of the key criteria is that in this case, there needs to be a minimum of 15 acres in the geographic area. All of that property as I mentioned previous needs to be owned by the entity in question. The primary purpose is just to provide some flexibility to the property owner in terms of being able to make development decisions in advance, to be amended at times.
Certainly.
So to provide a little bit more flexibility than we rely on the underlying zoning.
So it's an overlay. It only applies to property owners of the applicant. So it's a shorthand. It's a little unfair, but it happens to work for the two active ones. I almost can think of it as a campus, a community. It's so that they establish some rules that are overlayed, probably different than the current zoning, marry them, administer stuff, the applications that come into those property owners.
So it's in a way kind of like a conditional use for development. There's just certain things that can't be done. There's certain things that are agreed to be done or not to be done with the plan, and as long as those things are not changed without coming back for an amendment, the developer or the applicant is given leniency to make decisions within that area.
I wouldn't confuse it with the initial.
I was just using that as kind of an example of governing agreement.
Sure. So I think your commentary is right. We probably say it's closer to a form-based code type overlay, less emphasis on form, more emphasis on the mixture of uses, and some dealing with setbacks.
Yeah, thanks.
And it makes it a little easier for them to shift and move the rulings. The heavy lifting the commission did, like you said, a long time ago in 1960, and then we redid the whole thing and established a new slate with current rules just a few years ago, and now we're being careful about the amendment. Those standards apply. I will say tonight, there's really not heavy lifting because all we're doing is shrinking the boundary as opposed to adding. And we'll talk a little bit more in the information items about sort of efficiencies as to how to do that, we might be able to figure out. But the simple answer in this chart is, as you look at the geography, the geography that's coming out are these parcels that have been sold by the developer, and they're all south of 40.
I know there's a lot of stakeholders in that CUP area. Is there ever a time to clean up the zoning in this district?
Pardon?
Is there ever a beneficial time to clean up the zoning in this CUP? Because it's outdated, or?
I don't know.
I guess it's the land use.
You don't really need to clean it up because the governing factor is the overlay. The underlying zoning doesn't really matter.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's confusing when you see that map.
Right. So it's supermosen on that map. Now, an interesting point that gets to be a little is, it walks like a duck, acts like a duck. It's Wash U, and it's how many constituent agencies? Four?
Really two, Wash U and BJC.
Are the owners of record in this geography. So they're not going to do things to harm themselves. They have this tool, and so our interesting part is want to make it understanding when we expand it. That's an issue for the neighborhoods. When we shrink it, this is what we're doing tonight, it's currently from the sale to other users to do there. That's probably an easy thing to do, but one of the things we're mindful that we would say is keep an eye on what the underlying zoning is because that would then apply to the.
So parcels being removed have what zoning?
Industrial district.
So also, the other part is those uses, the underlying zoning has already been changed. We didn't actually change them.
My only comment is, hey, the buildings are there, and now it's an amendment.
Two points. So, yeah, and why, I'd like to figure out a way to do this differently. Is, one is the underlying zoning was made in accordance with this project. I think the project actually goes in and out of what the CUP was. And as Washington's lawyer will attest what's behind me, and Mary's lawyer will attest, is that when it was before Mary, one of the things that was very much given as instruction back to Wash U is, we'll help with this development, move it along, and we'll be in accordance with the zoning, but we expect you to come back with this amendment that's here tonight. And that was all part of it. We're linking it together.
Don, this is Ivy. Can the developers speak a little about the project themselves? All right. Everybody knows that Wash U is the largest employer in the state of Missouri, so certainly we support that. But I would like to hear something from the representative of Wash U or BJC.
Ivy, I'm sure they'd be happy to talk about some of their plans. This particular geography, they've sold to another developer that's performing and is constructing something in accordance with the current zoning. Wash U's not doing it.
Okay, well, who is here? Did you say someone is there?
Representatives from Wash U are here, knowing that they've requested the shrinking of their boundaries to make way for this cleaning of this technical matter so this other developer can build the project that they've built.
They know what the project is, right?
Pardon?
They do know what the project is?
Yeah, you may have missed it. Two projects. One is the Aventura Forest Park apartment building, which has already been completed, and the second is a hotel that's currently under construction, a Hilton Hotel, that would be located at Taylor and Shoto, both of which are just located south of Highway 40.
And I've seen the apartment building, so okay. Okay. And what kind of?
And one of the.
Which Hilton product is it? Homewood Suites? Which Hilton brand is it?
The name of the hotel again is Ho Two Suites by Hilton. I think it's an all-suites hotel.
Okay. Not Homewood, just Ho Two. I've never heard of that brand at Hilton. Okay, but that's all right.
It's a new brand.
It's a new brand, right?
I'm sorry?
All right. Okay.
So Wash U doesn't dabble south of 40 very often, but the redevelopment corporation did some strategic acquisition at one time here to actually be defensive, I would think, and ultimately facilitated the development of the hotel. Because they sold.
Other questions?
And would that be approved?
Second.
Move in seconded that we approve, what we're approving is the staff, the reasons that the staff has outlined, and the facts and the evidence that's been brought forward in a report to us, and we're finding that it's in conformance with the general strategic land use plan, and we're recommending it to the Board of Aldermen, and the previous roll has been requested. Is there any objection by any of the commissioners here to telephone to the use of the previous rolls? Hearing none, matter passes. Thank you all for your contribution. And we'll move on to the rezoning petition. Item number seven. I think you're going to give us that.
Good evening. This is a rezoning petition for 4433 Marcus. Which is the vacant lot, a single-family zoning. The remainder of the site is a convenience store. It is going to F Neighborhood Commercial. So they're proposing to rezone the southern parcel so they can consolidate the site and build a new convenience store. They're proposing a 3,000 square foot convenience store, and Mr. Han, Joe from Cole, is here. If you have questions, he's the architect representing OW Partners, the owner of the The site is immediately south of Interstate 70, and this is Birture, and this is Marcus. So this is the existing gas station and convenience store. You can see the convenience store is directly from the corner back. That's why it's part of a canopy. If you look towards the south, this is the vacant lot. You can see it better on this photo. So they're seeking the free space right here. There's a fence presently between the two properties, but it's owned by the same owner who is the petitioner. This is the front elevation of the convenience store, which is faced north towards Interstate 70 and Birture Boulevard. This is the site plan. This is the canopy, which would stay, the gas fuel pumps stay. This is the existing convenience store, which is very small and kind of tucked in a corner by the air. It would be replaced by a larger convenience store and added parking for a convenience store.
Is that a home to the top left?
There's homes right across here. In a minute, I'll have a photo of it. So this is the existing zoning. The neighborhood is mostly a single family. There's commercial nodes, including this one. Here's the adjacent residences. This is the vacant lot. It's been vacant since 2007. Then there's residential, you know, immediately south, also to the west, and across the street to the. And this shows the lot, and so the adjacent, most effective residents would be in the one immediately to the south.
With your pointer, I'm sorry, can you show on the residential top photo where the new orientation of the building would go?
So instead of being back here, it would be this way, and the building faces this way. So it would be the back of the convenience store towards the neighbors' fence and house. This is the strategic land use plan. The entire neighborhood is neighborhood preservation area, and as you know, corner commercial is encouraged, this is existing, and it's an infill development to add to the corner commercial. So staff recommends the petition to change the zoning to F Neighborhood Commercial District. The zoning administrator pointed out that this, you know, will improve commercial opportunities in the area for residents, and people are getting, there's an off-ramp from 70 there, and it's good zoning practices to eliminate this improper zoning. It would be dual A and S if we did not zone it. And there's an established basis for the changing of the zoning to a less strict S Neighborhood Commercial. Staff recommends rezoning, and I'll be glad to answer any questions, and the architect is also here.
I think some of us do have questions, Mr. Cole. What's the buffer between the residential property and the new convenience store and the?
Some landscaping and fence?
How high will the fence be?
Six feet.
What's the, what are the configuration of light stations that might shed light on that?
Well, most of the lighting would be to the north of the building from the canopy that's already there, so there wouldn't be any lighting affecting the neighborhood to the south.
Building would serve as a buffer, in a weird way.
Yeah.
And Mary, will your staff review those specific details?
Not until we get to the building for that process.
I mean, as I look at, you know, picture number eight, in order to put that building there, the building is actually, the building's going to serve as a retaining wall, and with trash dumpsters, it's going to be in our retaining wall. So all of that is slightly lower than the residential.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
I mean, in a weird way, the building acts as a better buffer.
It does, except for the dumpster.
Except for where the dumpster is.
And the dumpster is like right to the front of the building.
Yeah.
So you go down into a trash dumpster in the front of the house.
Yeah. Which, yeah, makes me wonder why it's not flipped over towards the alley side.
Right, which seems odd, that it would be on the, it shouldn't be on the alley side.
Is there an alley there?
Yes.
Oh, I see, on that side. What's behind the building? Nothing? Just a walkway or a forped or?
There would barely be nothing, except maybe on the one side, an exit walkway, you
know, a small sidewalk. But there's really nothing back there.
I mean, there's a reason why that lot's been vacant. Little bit like to build a house next to a gas station. So does that create decay? Will this next house be, you know, right up against the gas station now? So I think that's where we're from struggling. I guess this has gone out to the community. The neighbors are aware of this zoning change, and that's.
I noticed there's no letter of support from the Alderman.
No, we tried to get a hold of the Alderman several ways. The Alderman stood, tied it, I called it. Will this next house be, you know, right up against the gas station now? So, I, I think that's where we're from, uh, struggling. I, I guess this has gone out to the community. The neighbors are aware of this, you know, zoning change, and that's what happened.
I notice there's no letter of support from the Alderman.
No, we tried to get a hold of the Alderman several ways. The Alderman stayed tied in. I called the secretary of the Alderman, I think her name is Tiffany. And, uh, I don't, we did not get a hold of him. He doesn't return phone calls.
Where is this?
Twenty-first floor, Anton. When I called him, and his only response was that he was going to be meeting with the people and he would get back with me. Um, of course, you understand, I can't tell people if they can't supply for a reason.
Right. And so?
My communication.
And Dick tried to reflect that that was a work in progress, but not executed yet in the resolution. But they put the petition in, we have forty-five days to look at it. It's in our time frame doing that. Obviously, I think the developer is well aware that it doesn't happen unless the board bill is introduced.
I just have some concerns, the area where the trash dumpster is going to be. And, and that looks like it's right next to the porch of the residence. And, and naturally, there will be lighting at the trash dumpster. And, um, it, you know, six feet up on something that's the test anyway isn't very much. I, you know, I wouldn't like to live there.
And the house has had a higher elevation for you.
Yes.
Hey, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of, of using this land and expanding that property to give you more relief. And I know our, our, we're not to comment on design, but in this case, design does help us better understand how that property's gonna be utilized as a result of the zoning. And make sure that it doesn't create this domino effect of the houses, uh, in that, that row. I sure would like to see more outreach and input and an updated plan that might resolve the trash dumpster in the front porch situation. Again, that's not our, really, the comment on design of this associated with that land.
So, that's not a totally unprecedented act, or request for this body. I think if I recall correctly, we had a similar conversation related to the CBS on Lindell. Uh, and we were concerned with the original orientation of that, uh, parcel, with it not being pushed up the sidewalk and some other things. And, uh, I think we tabled that and asked for some further conversation to be had. So, I don't, I don't know what the procedure would be, but, uh, I would also be in favor of that.
And I'm, and I'm favorable about the building, given on that lot line, because I think it does serve as a buffer and, because all the lighting that comes out from it is, it's gonna help buffer the lighting. So, I?
And sound and activity and everything.
Yes, I appreciate kind of where it's going.
So, let's do a couple of things, so we're well informed. This has not been a week that I've been able to be very attentive to all this, to give them some family matters. So, we're gonna dissecting a couple of things. Here, David, what do we need to do within the forty-five days?
That's what I was thinking.
And second, Mary, uh, what design review will actually happen about these details?
Uh, well, what will happen is when they apply for a building permit, we're just changing the zoning it up, meaning it's a convenience store. So, it will still require a conditional use hearing. So, as a conditional use hearing, if this would make sense that far, David would have the opportunity. But any conditions on it, including hours of operation, so.
And the fence height?
Right.
So, am I getting it that, that because of the topography, if we, if a standard allowance was a fence of six feet, and they show that, something that's higher than that would actually be more useful as a buffer because of the technology, because of the topography?
Yeah, I mean, right now, the retaining wall serves as a six-foot fence, but you'd really need something on top of that wall to screen it from the existing apartment.
And would, would that sort of gymnastics be able to wand its way through the process?
You mean that's a conditional use hearing?
And at the building division review?
Um, it wouldn't happen at the building division review.
The taller fence?
The taller fence might actually kick it to a board of adjustment hearing, uh, depending on where that.
Might not be a taller fence if it's on top of the wall.
Yeah, I'd have to see it on the plan to tell you for sure. But at any rate, we know it at least will be a conditional use hearing. It could be at a board of adjustment hearing, and maybe not with the, hey, one, except that conditions are okay. I would think that it probably wouldn't make a true reading pass up unless, you know, if this was something that the Alderman wanted, it probably wouldn't introduce the bill unless it's been to that.
So, um, Erin, three things are gonna happen. Is, one, we're gonna get reminded of what our obligation is. There are some things that are sort of notes and commentary that we might be able to compile somewhere. Uh, and then, as ironic as this may seem, is remember the public gets notified, uh, and a chance to come to the public hearing at the Board of Aldermen as a safeguard, regardless of what the, the owner has done in terms of community meetings, visiting, or the Alderman has asked them to do. So, David, just for the answer about what happens if we postpone?
Sure, well, what it, what it provides for is after studying an investigation and within forty-five days of filing the petition, the Community Development Commission, Reed Planning Commission, shall report to the petitioner its findings and recommendations. Where the Community Development Commission recommends modification in the request to change, amendment, or supplement, said petitioner may incorporate the recommended, recommended modification in the petition and forward it to the Community Development Commission for further study. And said commission shall report to the petitioner its findings and recommendations. So, it sounds like it's a period of negotiation with them. And of course, the forty-five days is really the sort of waiting period before board bill could be introduced. And then, the Alderman, should he so choose, after that forty-five days, can introduce a board bill up to another year after that. So, it opens up, after, after the planning commission decision, that starts a three hundred and sixty-five day clock for the Alderman to act.
And what time are we?
They applied on March seventeenth.
Is that any act, even an act of deference? I guess the Alderman doesn't have to do anything, so. If they don't do anything in three hundred and sixty-five days, then it starts. Our action. Your, your action, if you don't do anything, then after forty-five days, the Alderman can go ahead. If you act in less than forty-five days, then obviously the Alderman doesn't need it. I guess what I'm asking is what is a, what qualifies as an action? Is it a passing or approving, or the? It says the word recommendation. And the recommendation be can, you know, can be to modify. So, we can't make recommendations on?
Forty-five days ends, uh, before our, the planning commission.
Couple of questions if I could. How long has the owner owned this vacant lot? Do you know that?
It's been a while. I think it's been two or three years.
And did they buy it from the city? If I, was it LRA lot? Did they buy it from the person next door?
It's been private ownership, and it's been sold about three or four times.
And when was the last time there was a house on this lot?
Uh, two thousand and seven, and they did an emergency demolition, so.
So, the city demoed it?
Yes.
And then, we didn't end up owning it? My phone.
Is the house adjacent to the vacant lot, I could, do you know?
We actually looked at a picture, it might have had a fire, might have had a fire.
So, basically, what I'm hearing is, uh, the, the next process of the permitting process phase could flush out some of my concerns. Is that right? Community and?
You mean with the conditional use hearing?
Right.
Well, it would certainly open the opportunity for, you know, neighbors, Aldermen, anyone who wants to comment. Can I guarantee that, you know, I don't know for sure what kind of conditions we will get, you know, because we haven't had a hearing yet, so we haven't heard all the evidence from the test.
And what about the staff review with planning commission? Of some of these things that they look at?
Um, we don't have any kind of landscaping requirements for two stores. We don't have landscaping requirements in the zoning code. For motor fuel pumping stations, there's two things about fences and green space and stuff like that.
And any with your colleagues in Lisle Shop, they have to look at?
I cannot tell you, um, that's the building code. I, I don't know. And where does, where do things, you know, light pollution, noise, that sort of thing?
Nowhere.
So, what are our, what are our options for modifications? Because that's where we're really at here.
I mean, I, I would approve this, would be willing to approve this. Again, I don't, it's not in our purview, though, to approve something and say, well, the building needs to move towards, uh, Marcus Avenue and flip the trash dumpster, right? We can't do that.
Well, that's, that's my question.
David, that's not the nature of the modification.
And it would be in front of the front yard, that other building.
That would be a brick wall.
No, I mean, the, uh, building.
Front of the building.
Building. Front of the building.
The building is too big for a lot.
Right, yeah. You can't move that towards Marcus. Yeah.
Wonder how trash dumpsters live in a front yard, that, that back.
Yeah, right.
Remember, when we have a redevelopment plan, we have a little bit more stick in the game. And remember, as you've heard people talk about putting overlays in with form-based code, uh, some of those things end up more specifically applied in those.
And one thing, I guess, if you remember several years ago, there was a study of these new stores that asked when maybe that condition is, it's been in the building. Because we had seen, you know, uh, situations where the neighbors had some things about, is this the operation or won't it be a conditional use hearing? Wasn't a way of giving them a chance to, to.
I guess at the end here, it seems like we're preempting something that, one, has to also go through an ordinance process, which it has not, nor has the Alderman even, you know, commented on. Uh, and then, two, has to be, uh, taken through a secondary process of a conditional use, where these types of conversations can again be had, and I think often do happen. Uh, as far as hours of operation, you know, the types of things in the exterior, placements of dumpsters, requirements for dumpsters, et cetera. So, um, maybe we're, we're too far ahead of ourselves.
But rezoning the property is permanent?
Sure, and so then, it's a question of whether we agree that that parcel should indeed be a commercial use opposed to residential use, and that is our purview. So, if we don't feel that way, then that's where we are.
So, that, that focus is in on your purview, is appropriate use in accordance with the strategic land use plan, and that's your decision.
Would it be possible for the applicant to, um, withdraw this application until the other questions in the neighborhood and the Alderman have been involved in this discussion, so that it's not a no vote?
We, uh, good question, uh, just so we talk out loud, we've asked applicants in the past, we're obligated to do something within forty-five days. We've asked applicants in the past to waive that forty-five day obligation. So, A, they could withdraw it, uh, that might be a tool in this case.
Well, that's, uh, waiving the forty-five days is sort of interesting.
I think what we wouldn't want to have happen is, you know, cause them to pay another cost, whatever that is, to be on an additional agenda when it's our ask to prolong the process.
Yeah.
And what do we want to do in that time?
Well, I think all of us would feel better if we heard something affirmative from the Alderman, or just something.
Neighborhood stuff?
And, and we seem to know very little about the occupancy of the house, um, or, or the opinion of the owner of the property about, um, the rezoning. Uh, which is now a pleasant vacant lot, and.
And will that house get torn down, and then there'll be a bunch of trucks that are circling behind there?
And remember, that formal public process happens at the, well, Hudson Bureau. So, the, I think the, the, it sounds like, uh, A, uh, the forty-five day clock expires before our next meeting. Uh, we have some instructions you'd like to pass on, uh, that might be useful to this as opposed to completely stopping it. Uh, and the recognition that it's not going anywhere until there's a board bill introduced, uh, which the earliest that could happen is the very end to April or?
May first.
May first. And, uh, there's, uh, just a week after that before. If we were to do something again at the planning commission, is that something you desire to do? Or do you desire that, that, uh, there are these other activities to have? If you want to do it at the planning commission again, then I think we either need to ask them to withdraw, which may mean the, uh, extension goes back to reapplying. Or we ask them to extend and waive the forty-five days so we can take it up again, uh, at the next planning.
Personally, I think I would be, um, more meaningful to asking to take this up again at the, at the May Planning Commission, with the ask that there's some sort of report back from the applicant on how the rezoning of this residential parcel to a commercial parcel is not going to negatively impact that existing residential housing stock. Uh, whether that is a reconfiguration of the site, or, uh, some sort of additional buffering that takes place in order to protect that street. Uh, but I think there's a fair presumption here that the vacant lot, uh, among other factors, uh, may be attached to the fact that it's in a not-so-desirable location any longer.
Yeah, so, so, I gotta be confused, because I can't do everybody's jobs for them, uh, all through the city system, uh, in that next thirty days. So, uh, I'm wondering how we would do that.
Sure.
Frankly, so you need to give me some help on that. And we need to, Dick made an important point, that we did make a conscious effort to change the zoning law as it applies to, to, uh, convenience stores. So, it must go, people correct me if I get this wrong, to a conditional use process.
It does.
They could get the zoning they wanted, Shane led the charge. Uh, they could get the zoning they wanted, but they don't get the convenience store unless they also have the, the, the conditioning use.
If it's under five thousand square feet, which this is three thousand square feet, so it would go to a conditional use.
So, I'm, I'm?
Is that right?
Wondering if our rationale and our doing of that was in part to protect very much for these types of situations.
Sure, and so if, if what we're saying here is what I said previously, that we may be, uh, preempting a process that is to be happening, then, then I'm fine.
I think we should move the ball, move the ball forward.
Motion approved.
So, understanding there will be a conditional use hearing on this matter, um, we could approve this, and could we also, uh, pass along our discussion? Anyone from the planning staff or the planning commission can, when it gets to, when it comes to conditional hearings, certainly give us a memo or summary of what they'd like to see. There's no reason why they couldn't consider that as a conditional use hearing.
So, why don't we put that on next month's agenda and say that we should revisit this point to? contemplate whether we want to do a memo, if and when this gets to that point. Is that allowable? Just as an additional item, additional business?
You're gonna approve it tonight and then ask to do that letter?
To do a secondary memo to a conditional use hearing.
Sure.
The only thing that I would say. Do you have a motion on the table?
Not yet.
Oh.
So Patrick, I'm chairman. Are we asked when to do that? Because we're concerned that we couldn't gel everything that we have as a comment tonight to put in a letter to send as part of the conditional use process? Is that what you're thinking, Patrick?
Yeah.
And so with that, I think a fair thing to do, and David, help me on this because my brain is pretty weak this week. Had two deaths in the family this week. One a dog and one a deer. Deer were fine, so. I'd prefer actually not to be here. So what I would think that we might do is make a recommendation and vote this with an instruction that we bring back a draft of the letter for you to see next month.
Okay.
And then we'll send that into the process.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll look at the surrounding area.
So I move approval with the addition of a forthcoming memo for next month's draft memo for next month's planning commission meeting.
I second that motion. I second this. The motion is Ivy.
Potentially send to the condition.
So we have a motion and it's been seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Like?
I'm gonna vote against this because I think before we change the zoning on something, we ought to have information in the affirmative about why it's a good idea. So it might be a good idea. I don't really know. But that's, that's a.
And I would.
You know, we're just kind of saying, oh, somebody wants to change it. We're gonna change it and let somebody else do the job of deciding whether or not it's a good idea. That's just my point of view.
What we do is look at the strategic land use plan and the neighborhood preservation.
And so, you know, we're saying it's a.
We're saying that this is will preserve the neighborhood well? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I think we've gotten into the discussion of if we expand the site, it's still a corner commercial.
Yeah, okay.
So Dick, as you look at the strategic land use plan, it's not a commercial area, right? It is a corner commercial activity that's allowed activity within the neighborhood preservation area.
Yeah.
So in terms of the planning commission, what Alderman Cruzon is saying is, right? We're looking at an existing use in this area and it's expanding. It's a corner commercial expansion. And you're asking is there evidence and arguments to be made for that expansion of this designated corner commercial activity? It's there. Corner commercial activities are allowed.
Are gas stations allowed in F?
What are the conditions of?
As a conditional use. So it's, you can get their condition. And that's where there are some site requirements there. Fencing, landscaping.
Yeah, I'll let it go. I mean, I don't.
But the point I'm trying to make, Wyatt, is you're right. Is this is not a site on the strategic land use plan that is designated commercial or designated anything other than the mix of things that are allowed in.
Yeah.
In this category, corner commercials allowed. You're wondering, can you give some justification for it to be expanded as a corner commercial?
And maybe that's not a request that we place upon staff. Because you do the quantitative work more or less, but maybe it's a qualitative ask that we've that we place with the applicant to suggest why this is a good thing. Is that more?
Applicant or the Alderman or the neighborhood group or somebody. And so, you know, why is this a good idea?
Right. Opposed to just being in conformity with the.
As opposed to they applied, they applied, we've got 45 days and we don't want to turn it down.
Sure.
We've had a.
So with that, what do you do?
No, it's fine. There's a motion.
We've had a motion. There's a second. It's Patrick and Ivy. Further discussion? Can you read the roll, please?
Alderman Cruzon?
No.
Alderman Kong?
Hi.
Shane?
Chair Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Pinkston?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Spade?
Aye.
Commissioner Visentainer?
No.
And the motion passes with six yes votes and two no votes.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda are the delegated items. One in large on that's been bolded. Does anyone have any questions about those items? And we'll move on to the informational items. Discussion of the community unit plan amendment procedures.
You're right, Madam Chairman. We're done on actions for tonight. So we just want to give you a heads up and two things that were kicking around. One is, you heard briefly before, both of these are works in progress. So we're not really presenting anything tonight to digest, just sort of as a heads up that we'll be more covered.
Yeah, this is an informational item regarding a proposed amendment of the city zoning code regarding community unit plan amendment procedures. That procedure is what we were going through earlier today when reviewing amendment number two of the Washington University Amendment Amendment CUP. Currently, the procedure for a geographic amendment of a CUP, and what I mean by a geographic amendment is expanding or shrinking the size of a CUP. That procedure starts with the filing of an amendment application form by the entity that holds the CUP and a $300 filing fee. Now, in some cases, CUP can involve amendment can involve a fair amount of time and resources on the part of the applicant in terms of preparing that application. And that would be in terms of legal expertise, surveying, creating a legal description, things of that nature. And there are some resources on the part of the city staff as well. Your time in terms of the planning commission reviewing it, a public hearing that's held before the how the urban development and zoning committee, and the time it takes to get the board bill approved by the Board of Aldermen and the Department of Ordinance. So during the process of reviewing the amendment number two of the Wash U CUP, the question arose is if the amendment of the CUP involves only removing one or more parcels from an existing CUP as a result of the sale of those properties, should a more streamlined process be proposed? And that's the type of thing that we've been looking at. And Don mentioned this is very much still in the preliminary stages, but we've done some work on this. So staff from the zoning section, and we have Mary Hartford zoning that's ready for tonight, the city councilor's office and PDA are undertaking a review of that CUP amendment process with the hope to propose a streamlined approach to amend the geographic boundaries of an existing CUP. And that study would focus on three particular items. One would be the removal of one or more parcels from an existing CUP as we had tonight in the case of Washington University. And particularly in the case if that involved a real estate transaction. In other words, the CUP applicant was just selling off property to a developer. They had no need for the property. The second is the addition of one or more parcels to an existing CUP. And that may take a little bit more scrutiny in terms of deciding or reviewing that particular kind of amendment. And the third item that came along is the identification and possibly repealing of existing inactive CUPs. And what I mean by inactive CUPs are CUPs that are still on the books, have been on the books for a while. Development project has been completed. It's unlikely that there's going to be any changes involved should they be removed if they're no longer serving any function. Currently, the city only has two active community unit plans, both of which are involving Washington University. We heard tonight about the medical center. Washington University also has a community unit plan for its Danforth campus, that portion of the campus that's located in the city. That was enacted about 10 years or so ago. So there's not many of them around. But there is some time and effort involved in amending these procedures. So what we hope to do is to present a proposal to the planning commission at a future meeting that will present those changes. Obviously, you will need to approve those and ultimately it will require the passage of an ordinance at the Department of Ordinance.
How many index of CUPs are there?
Mary's staff has been doing some research.
About 10 on the books that are inactive? They're on the books. We're in the process of researching it. They're on the books legally and they really were established as a CUP or if there is the possibility that it's on the books that there really isn't a CUP there. We haven't found any like that yet, but we're also having trouble finding ordinances that actually establish some of these CUPs because they're so old. Yeah.
They back pretty far.
So.
Yeah.
So you remember, Patrick wasn't here, but it was a big ordeal, but Wash U, one of our two big players that used CUPs, we decided to say, it's too dusty. The 1960 version was too dusty. And we redid it from scratch a couple of years ago.
And just as a little bit of history, there's a lot of new members at the board that some of you might remember. Wasn't it like around 2006 or something? We looked at amending the community unit process parts before that had been in the interest of our guys. So the staff looked at it. It never made it to the planning commission. So I think, you know, the thought process has been, this is kind of an antiquated process on the books and we need to look at, you know, is there a way that we can streamline it and still meet the intent of the zoning code, you know, to protect the public health involved there?
And a realization about the tool is used. And when the tool is used with a big entity that has to do a lot of processes to get them a simple approval, time is money to that. We end up being in a situation that I prefer not to be in again, where we come to you having done this with a little bit of, take some time with this end, and a little bit of a developer doing something that the hotel's broke.
But I've been wondering, I mean, how did that get approved since it didn't comply with the CUP?
It's a good point, but it didn't mean that it didn't comply.
How did the apartment project and the hotel? I mean, I'm not opposed to them at all. I'm in favor of them, of course, but, you know.
And two things is one, we did do a zoning change for part of that, for the underlying zoning.
Which doesn't apply.
Well, part of what we're, part of what we're.
It's really about three-fourths of the sites of the apartment and hotel is actually south of. And they expanded the site for the apartments.
I recall seeing that here.
Then we thought.
But not knowing there was a CUP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the legal questions is when they sold it? Because CUP only applies to the entities. Was that a trick? So we're trying to figure that out. And then part of what we ended up.
Hey, I'm sorry. It's Shane. My phone battery is about to die. I'm gonna have to hop off here.
All right. We have no more action items tonight, Shane.
Bye, Sharon. Thank you.
Thanks so much, everyone.
So part of what came up with is approval under the, for the new property owner, under the zoning, with a commitment from Wash U to come and bring us what they brought. And part of what we're talking about in terms of our process is going to be different. It's going to put some definitions to that process. So it all could happen because it's a reasonable timeframe and we don't do these strict events. But we also don't hold up somebody for.
Yeah.
Two real quick comments. One, if you, anytime you inactivate or get one through inactivation, then you've got zoning issues you're gonna deal with, conditional uses or non-compromising uses or whatever. So that could be an issue, I believe. So that may complicate things in inactivating. But.
Part of that is we don't know whether they're actually being used.
Right.
They may be on the books, but are they actually being used?
And also, it's interesting when you look at the zoning code about how detailed it is when you develop a community unit plan as a, I mean, I'm sorry, a PUD, as opposed to the community unit plan is really relaxed, you know? So sometimes you go back to these old CUPs and you see that it was really only established to build the project. And then they walked away. Nobody, there's nothing in there to hold anybody to, but they're still on the books. And I think we just ought to clean that up. I think it's confusing, A, to the staff when they're looking at the permit, B, if somebody's trying to do development, am I under a CUP or am I under zoning?
It'd be really interesting to see a map of the CUPs.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
It'd be interesting, two things, to see a map of the CUPs and see when we last used any of the regulations within the CUP or whether they're just right now being conformed with the underlying zoning.
Yeah.
And if there's a minimum size of an acreage for a CUP.
There is.
There is. Fifteen acres. Drop off parcels without the survey. You may get more of that.
Oh, we would be mindful of that. Like the draft language would have some little sentence at the end. What I saw when I was looking at other cities and how they did it, a lot of them included this little sentence at the end that this could be done administratively as long as it meets the intent of the original ordinance it was approved under. So then you'd go back to that and in this instance, it requires it to be 15 acres. They have about roughly 140 acres, so taking the two would not in any way take them. But we would definitely look at that because that was one of our first concerns. We don't want anybody to be able to take away so much land that they don't meet the intent.
Well, Heidi will remember this, but there is a community unit plan, a CUP, on the Danforth campus of Washington University on the portion that's in the city. And it's 15 acres sort of by the skin of its teeth, so, you know.
They took over.
I remember that. I was the Alderman. I remember that.
But to Dick's point, the minimum, the minimum is probably so. It's not spot zoning. It's making it for this institution to be able to do all those things. So two things, is all those things will be juggled. We're gonna not be paralyzed by all that. Which is important to us because we just don't want it. We got other things to do.
Okay, let's go.
Do we need notification? You have something to tell us on that?
Quickly. Again, it's a work in progress, not one that we need to discuss much. But we reflect you on this wall. The group that was here last time was wondering what they could do with changes. And Mary's brought a couple of things that are from our existing procedures, so.
And that's the standard one that Mary's staff.
So just so you'll know the difference, the black and white board is the board that the Board of Aldermen has printed up for the HUDs committee meetings. They attach the board bill to it. They bring the boards up to our office. The ordinance actually says that the clerk of the Board of Aldermen is supposed to post it as a courtesy, because we have a zoning inspector that's out in the field anyway. We've been posting these for the Board of Aldermen for a number of years. I also think it was a good idea because we're more familiar with the site. So we make sure that the posting board actually gets right in front of the site.
He also has a hairline fracture, so it'd be difficult to get around him. He's a little pushcart at the moment.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So there are those standard techniques?
Then the red and white posting board over here, just to give you an example, that is what we use for the conditional use hearing. And then laying on the chair is the one that we use for the Board of Adjustment hearing. In the ordinance, it doesn't specify at this time a size for any of these signs. And the size, you know, I didn't make that up. These are the boards that have always been there. I will tell you that when I went down to get the black and white board from the Board of Aldermen, they've got a few thousand of them pre-printed. Somebody had to pay for that. I don't know how much that costs, but I do know that when we order 500 of those red and white boards from, is it escaping the name?
Multi-Graph.
Multi-Graph, yes. It's a few hundred dollars. And we go through them really quickly. So we have that budgeted in our line item.
So I'll interject because we're. So I'll interject, because we're, have, this is a work in progress. You can see these two standard things with very antiquated technology.
Yeah.
One that Mary is pointing out that her staff uses, has big print, really big print, on a bigger board, and it's printed downstairs in the basement. Another one, there may be a thousand of them, but they're also printed downstairs in the basement and not that big, so there's...
And no phone number, and no website, and no way to contact anybody.
Some of that stuff. So that leaves us to the matrix, which Dick has been working on, which we're gonna say is a work in progress as opposed to a big discussion item of looking at what other cities do and what some of the best practices are in a variety of categories.
2008 is when we studied it the last time, and they changed it to, simplified version is that we made ours more similar to St. Louis County, instead of having the longest days, the most, you know, we tended to go back to what we had to do under state law. The, so we looked at Missouri cities then and looked at them now. The items in red are things that have changed. And to give you a little idea, all these other cities, and I'm counting St. Louis County as a city, all of these utilize three methods of notification, use the newspaper, mail, and sign. And the county didn't do it until May of last year, there was a project in South County, elderly, it's controversial, so they're now, you know, have to put that back in. Newspapers, all the other cities just use it for general circulation, we're the only one that gives an efficient, it's a problem. And the mail items, the trend from 2008 to 2015 has begun to expand. Mail notice, Kansas City went from 185 feet to 300 feet out. St. Louis County, of course, went from zero to notifying 1,000 cheat out, so... The other thing is Kansas City and Springfield both keep a register of neighborhood groups, recognized neighborhood groups, and both, they can also do mail to these groups. Signs, obviously, part is 11 by 17. County uses 36 by 36, 3 feet by 3 feet, and Springfield uses 30 inches by 20. But they're also, if you look in Kansas City, they're doing 15 acres in an interchange of a highway, you know, so we're doing a lot of the, you know, cleaning up the map, and so that's part of the reason that we're charging a lot less, but we're having, you know, if you know, they're doing all these notifications, but they're also charging. Springfield charges 1,680, Kansas City starts in 625, a lot of them are high. And St. Louis County is 500, so 250. Clayton's the only one that looks like it's us, but then they, they make them do two newspapers at the planning commission and at the council, so they're, they're doing 250 plus for ads.
They got 250 constructed by charter, is that, or can we charge our costs?
We changed them a little while ago.
We amended our fee, or we added a fee schedule back into the zoning code, we actually found, Becky did some excellent research, and found where back in the 70s, the city had a fee schedule and then at some point it was taken out. So we added one back in about two years ago, I guess that was, and we raised our fees. You know, I think there was some concern that time on the part of Aldermen muscles about, we had actually, our staff suggested higher fees than what we raised them to.
And different departments actually, all of us said, well, how much do we charge?
Right, and we tried...
We figured out the hours and the cost of us processing all of them, and it would've been numbers, you know.
Yeah, all of the, for all of the items in our fee schedule, the cost that we determined that it actually took us to review was a lot less than what we were charging, but, you know, we went up as, as much as we could, which was a big improvement. I mean, it used to be $50 to apply for a rezoning.
Something to keep in mind as people are asking us to do more. So...
So do I understand this correctly, that St. Louis used to mail, and now we don't do any mail?
Well, there was an option of doing the mailing, and it was on the city block and adjacent city blocks, which the lawyers told us are southeast and west, and also catty corners. So the building, CityWalk, when they did their calculation, the Chase Park Plaza was in an adjacent block. So I mean, just for that site, there was like 1,800.
So did we change that by ordinance or just by practice?
No, no, you couldn't change it by practice if it was in the ordinance, you had to do it. And there was an ordinance change to it, and our city councilors worked with the Board of Aldermen city councilors, I can't remember exactly who.
If we were gonna do it, you'd do it by feet, I think.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you?
If you were gonna do it, I don't think you'd do it with city blocks, you'd probably do by feet.
Yeah, it became really complicated. The last one that had to go through it, if anyone remembers, when Mr. Limer from Crusoe's came and he wanted to rezone that one parcel, and he ended up having to do the mailing and... Because the way it was written at that time is the applicant, if I remember correctly, the applicant had to do the mailing, the Board of Aldermen had to put it in the newspaper, which putting it in the post-dispense was rather expensive, so we had a lot of input from...
Two daily newspapers.
And then we had our city councilors research it to make sure that what we were proposing does meet the minimum requirements that the chapter 89 of the state statute. Because remember, all of our public notice stuff, it's not stuff that we set up and dreamed around for us to do. That's all established by the state zoning and planning and zoning enabling legislation. So we can do, we have to do what they say, if we choose to do more, we can. I will tell you that when we are out, particularly when the zoning staff and the planning staff are out together posting large projects, like the special use districts or the form-based districts, we always post more than the ordinance requires us to, because we figure those are large areas, we're taking in whole city blocks. So we try to do like four to a city block to make sure that as many people as possible see it, you know?
So we may want some more...
But then to get information on it, all you really can do is come to the meeting.
Right.
Which is during the day when most people are at work.
Well, on those larger ones, doesn't it say something about who to call, I thought? We added something to it. Now, on the smaller ones, I have people call me all the time and say, I don't...
I do, too.
I couldn't tell you how they figure out, but, you know, we talk to people all the time about the rezoning, you know?
So we're gonna spend some staff time on this.
If I can just say something more, I think. 2008, no one used the internet. St. Louis County does put their public notices with report pages, maps, online. Clayton does kind of a listing of notifications which included in there is zoning. But most places, you know, don't do anything.
So the bigger picture here is, this is a work in progress, gave you a little sausage making here. We'll be doing some more digesting. You notice Mary has something with progress. We have established ourselves at the baseline for the state. We do some things that are embellishments, maybe we ought to formalize those embellishments, and also looking at technology. So we'll, we'll do those things, and Mary and Dick both made a big statement from days gone by of when, because we talked about what the Aldermen does, there's also NSOs that are supposed to be responsible for getting communications to, to their neighborhoods.
I mean, that's the point I should've brought up at the last planning meeting when we were hearing some criticism. I was an NSO for several years, and that was my job, to go to the neighborhood meetings and to make sure that the neighborhoods knew, you know, what things, had public hearings. And if I wasn't gonna be at the neighborhood meeting, I had a person that I could fax that information to so that at least the president of the neighborhood association could announce it.
So we're, we're, we're doing the sausage making, we have some old habits, we have some new habits, we're gonna try to be insistent to work with price structures and some market, and come back with some recommendations.
And just one more little bit of information, I did a little looking into the parcel that we did the reasoning that was sort of controversial three years later. Recently, within this year, we've had at least one public hearing on that property, and that was whenever they built the community center, and there were people there in support of it, and there was nobody there in opposition. So some people knew.
They broke the community center?
They had a public hearing for it because they applied, I don't know that it's actually built yet, but they went, did go to a public hearing, because it's a C district, so the community, while the multifamily housing was allowed, the community center was not. But somebody knew that things were going on there.
We know, we hear that all the time. No one told us.
Well, and there's, I'll leave one last comment, is that a wise elected official said, you know, you can do all this, the newest, latest, and greatest, and there'll still be somebody that said, I didn't know.
Right, yeah, well, people are busy.
Any new business?
Moving adjourned.
There are more new adjournments?
I did.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye.